Stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor Gorley.
Here.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Thorstad. Pro Tem Muller. Mayor Coleman.
Present. Look, the record show that we have six present and one potentially absent. I know that Counselor Thorstad was trying to join by phone, so we will vote on excusing his absent or I'll accept a motion, but he might join us anyhow, so. If anybody would like to move regarding.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve Counselor Thorstad's absence. Vote please.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Trask. Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes, six ayes, no nays to approve Counselor Thorstad's absence if he is absent. He is at a major event for his work, but he is going to try and call it. Moving on to the first item on our agenda is consent agenda. Please note that there are some minutes in there and also a CSC contract.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Vote please.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller.
Yeah.
Counselor Thorstad, oh, Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six ayes and no nays to approve the consent agenda. Moving on to recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. We were going to have a presentation from Sean Tate regarding SMAC. I requested that this be left in the packet just for your review. Sean is sick tonight, so he's unable to present, but I'd love it if you guys would read it over as he will be back at our next council meeting. Are there any other visitors that would like to come forward this evening? Okay. Moving on to request for council action, applications for publicly owned facilities, pocket parks. We can.
So as you're aware, we have a policy for naming parks which requires a public hearing. It also specifies a time period from the time when the advertisement is placed to when the public hearing happened. Inadvertently, we scheduled this public hearing tonight too early. And so while the notice included tonight's date as the date of the public hearing, we need to actually wait longer. And so our request is that this be tabled and scheduled for the next meeting. And anyone who is interested in this, that is present, can attend at the next meeting.
Okay. So we are going to table this item for our next council meeting. Moving on, zone map amendment application.
Thank you, Mayor. We're all aware, the last council meeting, we held a public hearing on ZMA twenty-three dash zero three. At that meeting, the public was heard, those in opposition and those in favor, and the staff report was read at that meeting. However, a final decision was was not made. As required by state law, we do need to respond to the applicant within a hundred and twenty days with a a final decision. And so after consulting with the city attorney and Mayor Coleman, staff placed this item back on the agenda so that a final decision can be made. A couple of items that have staff has learned since that time. Two of the matters that were brought up involve transportation and the safety of schoolchildren and the capacity of the school district in that area. We have heard from the school district, Kevin Strong, the business operations manager, emailed staff and a copy of that is in your packet. He has that Hawthorne School has capacity so that even if this property were developed to the full potential with the R3, if it was changed to R3 and was developed to the very most dense housing, Hawthorne Elementary could still handle that increase. The, another matter that was brought up by the, in the public comments was concerning transportation and safety. Our code requires any development that is that is based on a zone change is brought within the requirement to have a traffic impact study done as part of the development. And so if this application is approved and the applicant brings forward a an application for development of housing that is along the lines of this new zone, part of that probably include a transportation impact study to to verify that all of the streets in the area have sufficient capacity. And if they do not have sufficient capacity, that study would would indicate what improvements are necessary to to serve the added population in that area. So that's, that's how that would be handled. In this case, for for many developments, when it comes to a house here or a house there, usually a traffic impact study is not required. However, in this case, it would be. Another item that was brought up was regarding safety. This development would be required to complete the sidewalk in that intersection. For those familiar with the area, there is no sidewalk on the the east side of the street. And so making that connection around the corner would be required, and that would also improve the safety because all of the children from that neighborhood that are walking to Hawthorne would have the option of of taking a path that would not require them to cross the street. And which is always a better option when it comes to pedestrians. Finally, just to reiterate that this application does not include any specific development plans. The R3 zone is a high density housing zone. However, it's almost a misnomer because there is quite a variety of housing that is possible in the in the high density zone. It could include duplexes, but it could include from there to townhomes, cottage clusters, which are kind of a, if you imagine taking an apartment building and dividing up the apartments into little cottages that each have their own space, but there's still a communal area that would be what a cottage cluster is. And then, of course, apartment buildings are are a possibility within that zone. That's not a requirement when you apply for a zone change. It's not a requirement to specify what development it would be. And the applicant has indicated they're still looking into that. But just so you all are aware, there is a wide variety that could happen there. Finally, as you're aware, we had a housing needs analysis done last year. Just to remind you of the conclusion of that, it projects that over the next two decades, we to, if you assume the same population growth that Sweet Home has had in the past, we would have to have at least six hundred and thirty new housing units to meet the demand that that population growth would bring. That's assuming that the same rate of population growth continues over the next twenty years as has occurred over the past. And unfortunately, with, we don't, just don't know what what to expect when it comes to population changes. New employers coming into town can have a drastic change in population, just like the lack of housing or the lack of opportunities in other cities can also have a drastic change, a change effect on housing in our area. So I would say that the need for six hundred and thirty units is certainly a very conservative estimate, and we are likely to need more. Finally, as you think about this application, I just wanted to reiterate the criteria that zone change is based on. There are four of them. The first is that the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. As the staff report notes, staff has found that it is consistent. The second criteria is that the proposed amendment is orderly and timely, considering the pattern of development in the area, surrounding land uses, and any change which may have occurred in the neighborhood or community to warrant the proposed amendment. The way that the comprehensive plan changes from that to the zoning map is that the comprehensive plan is the forward looking, looking twenty years into the future. The zoning map is what it's currently zoned at, and so it's designed to flow from one to the other. The main question in determining whether this zone change is appropriate at this time is to look at the overall picture for that area and say, is this the right time for this to change to the future zoning designation that has been set forth in the comprehensive plan? And so that would be a part of the decision making tonight. The third criteria is that utilities and services can be efficiently provided to serve the proposed uses or other potential uses in the proposed zoning district. Mr. Springman has weighed in on this, and it is clear to staff that there is sufficient service when it comes to our water and wastewater capabilities. The final criteria is that the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan map is consistent with Oregon's statewide planning goals. And that is looking at the statewide goals of economic development, housing, but also protecting the environment. All of those factors to to consider. So at, I won't take up more of your time on this since the staff report has already been presented to you previously. And so I will now take any questions that you might have.
Any questions from counselors?
So our planning commission did recommend passing this.
Correct.
Yes, they did. So I just would like to summarize and please correct me if I get anything incorrect. We have a comprehensive plan that's been in place since two thousand and.
Two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one.
With some modifications since that time.
Okay, so we have a comprehensive plan that's been in place since two thousand and one that directs how things get developed within the city of Sweet Home. But that comprehensive plan, is that something that is sent off to the state and the state has input on that, or is that?
When, if, I'm assuming that the that the rules were the same then as they are now for handling a comprehensive plan, and I don't think they've changed drastically. But if we were to go through a comprehensive plan amendment, we do notify the State Department of Land Conservation and Development of that change, that proposed change, and they have an opportunity for input at that time. I presume that that was probably done back when this was put in place.
Okay. And when this comprehensive plan was created, this area was zoned R3. So it's been R3, I mean, not so, I'm sorry.
Plan.
On the plan four for R3. So when somebody purchases a piece of property, they know what the comprehensive plan says about that property.
We encourage all property owners to do their due diligence when they purchase a property. And anyone looking into it at that time would have seen that the comprehensive plan map listed it as to be ultimately planned for R3, yes.
So they would know that when they're purchasing this property. So they would probably anticipate that that would be what they would be able to do with the property since the comprehensive plan is the guiding document. And then a zone request is made to change pieces of property to match what the comprehensive plan is there.
So, yes, as I, you could, you could certainly make a request to change your zoning to something different if you wanted. It's less likely to be approved. It's a harder lift. But the way it's designed to to work is a natural flow from the comprehensive and to the zoning map. When the time is right, when it can be served with the criteria that were just mentioned, served with the goal. Those, those factors are what's considered when it's changed.
Okay. And these decisions are to be made based upon those criteria that you've outlined here.
Correct. Um, area does, property values unfortunately are not one of, one of the criteria. That's not something that we're able to make a decision on. However, I will say that usually in in cities, usually is for higher density, you have higher population or higher property value with, because it would indicate that the owner has more that they can do with their property that could bring income in.
Are there any other questions from counselors?
I just have, before you, before you take a vote or anything, would you do your expertise? So you got that on record.
So that, that would be up for Mayor to to do the, we had the public hearing, but before you make an actual decision, it'd probably be best to reiterate the asking if any of the council have bias or ex parte contact, et cetera. But I'll leave that.
So counselors, if you have conflict of interest, that means has any member of the counselor had counsel or your immediate family have any financial or other interests in the application that has been disclosed? So if you happen to have any financial or other interest in this application, that needs to be declared now. So do any of you have a conflict of interest? Counselor Gorley?
No.
Counselor Trask?
No.
I do not?
No.
No.
Nope.
Okay. Ex parte information, information from without, from another source, this, the counselors, the city council is bound to base their decision on information received in the public hearing and what is presented in testimony. If a member of the city council has talked with an applicant or has information from outside the public hearing, it needs to be shared at this time so that everyone in the audience has an opportunity to be aware of it and the rest of council is aware of it. In that way, it can be rebutted and can be discussed openly. That's called ex parte information. Does any counselor have ex parte information? Counselor Gorley?
No.
Counselor Trask?
No.
I do not?
No.
Nope.
Okay, and personal bias. Do any counselors have a personal bias regarding this application? Counselor Gorley?
No.
Counselor Trask?
No.
I do not?
No.
No.
Nope.
Okay. Any questions from counselors? Any comments?
So, if if we turn this down again, what are the consequences?
Um, so rejection of an application. First of all, rejection happens if there is a tie, it is deemed denied. If there, if the application is rejected, then it would fall in the applicant's, the ball would be in the applicant's court of what to do next. If the applicant feels that that is an incorrect decision, there's always an option to appeal. And and so if they feel that was a, you know, not following our code or was not based on the criteria that had been mentioned, then that certainly would be grounds for an appeal. The city has had appeals in the past. Most notably, the, there is a plan development that is on Sunset Lane. That's essentially right next to Strawberry Park. I believe there was, that was initially denied, and there was a appeal followed which the city then lost. And the the development ended up going through. If, if there is an appeal and the city, the city would naturally have to defend it, and that involves legal fees. If we lost the appeal, then we would be faced with the legal fees of the other party also. And so that could, it's hard to put a price tag on what that would be, but you know, it could be on the order of fifty thousand dollars.
Any other questions?
Ideally, I mean, I just know but for me personally, I'm satisfied with two things. My concern with safety, traffic point, that was the two most things that were learning for me. That's the two things that stood out for me.
Okay.
Well, I know we talk a lot about safe housing, clean housing, affordable housing. We talk about all kinds of things here that we want to bring the best to our community we can. And I think that, I know we're not supposed to take into consideration the proximity of the school, that kind of thing. But I think that's actually a huge asset for families to be on the same side of the school, to be that close to the school, that to do our due diligence to the entire community. We owe it to them to do our best, and I think that is as good as it's going to get.
Yeah, and the school is good with it. I mean, yeah, so they're ready for it.
Our numbers in school in the community have been going down steadily for years, and this might actually help us without putting too many families road in the morning because that's definitely walkable, so.
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Vote please, call for a vote please.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
No.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show that we have five ayes, eyes, one nay, and one absent. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and counselors. So what we're bringing forward to you tonight is the resolution to adopt the first city public arts program policy and guidelines for the city of Sweet Home. So we have the city of Sweet Home's Ad Hoc Committee on Arts and Culture, and quite a few items have been moving forward, and that committee recommended policies and guidelines to govern acquisition, retention, and letting go of public arts at their meeting on November twenty-first. And staff worked on creating this policy, and then it went forward to the Arts and Culture Committee, and they added some additional guidelines and modified it a little bit. So now we're bringing it forward to council for review. It's a very high level art policy that just provides some basic guidance for following any type of projects like mural projects or getting sculptures going or anything along those lines. So we wanted to bring that forward for councils so you can decide not to move forward with it, or you can go ahead and ask us to amend it, or feel free to make a motion to move it forward. And then we actually have our first art policy in place. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
I don't have any questions regarding that. I'd like to take a pause on something. Was I to have that ordinance zone map amendment? Is that an ordinance that needs to be read?
Uh, yes, it is. So the the request in the RCA was that if there is approval, it'd be approval and the first reading.
Okay, so.
So let's go back to the art.
We can do the first reading when we do the first reading of the other ordinances if you wish.
Okay.
Up to you.
Sounds good. We'll finish up the arts, public art policy and then move on.
Sounds good.
Any questions from counselors regarding the public art policy? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller. Counselor Trask. Mayor Coleman.
Yes. Let the record show that we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent. All right, so we can read the ordinance for the zone map amendment.
Zone map amendment.
Okay. Thank you. We will move that forward to the next council meeting for a second reading. Do I need help?
Yeah, you you need to vote to move it toward a second reading.
If it's passed unanimously, I'll say expedite.
Right, but.
Yeah, it wasn't passed, man. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to move it forward to the next council meeting. By title only.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, and Adam, go ahead.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller. Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Let the record show we have six ayes and no nays and one absent. To move that forward for the second reading at the next meeting by title only. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Codifying the Community Health Committee.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and Council. So the Health Committee has been in place for a number of years and has been a positive influence in our community. And this is to go ahead and make it go from an ad hoc committee to an actual committee that is in our code and that has some guidelines and that can help keep it consistent throughout the years. This also goes ahead and historically, this committee has always received about a thousand dollars annually to support the Sweet Home Community Health Fair. But that has never actually been, as far as I have seen, something that was put into place. This would be actually keeping that money safe for that each year and having that in our budget. It also talks a little bit about just the structure of that committee and moving forward and puts it in place as one of our few actually codified committees in the city.
Any questions from counselors? Okay. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number one for twenty twenty-four. Adam, would you please call for the vote?
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller. Mayor Coleman.
Yes, let the record show that we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent to approve ordinance number one for twenty twenty-four. And we shall read it.
Okay, and to move it to our first reading?
Yes, move it to your first reading.
If you would like, since it was unanimous, you can choose to make a motion to read it for a second time by title only.
Okay, if anybody would like to make that motion to have it set red for the second time tonight by title only?
So moved.
Second.
We got motion and second all over the place. So Adam, go ahead and vote, call for the vote.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller. Mayor Coleman.
Yes, let the record show that we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent to read it for the second time by title only this evening.
Ordinance bill number one for twenty twenty-four, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home Ordinance codifying the Community Health Committee.
Thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion to move this on for the third reading at our next council meeting. Motion in a second. Adam, call for the vote, please.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller. Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Crow. Counselor Trask. Counselor Corley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six I's, no nays, and one absent to move that on to the third reading at our next meeting. Okay. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, reports of city officials, city managers' report.
Thank you, and I'll keep this fairly brief. First off, I just want to thank council and staff and everybody who was, took care of everything while I was out. I also want to thank the community for, you know, some of the kind words. I want to thank council for the flowers and also staff. Also, I want to just talk about for just a second how proud I am of this team. They kept everything running absolutely beautifully. They took turns, most of the directors acting as interim for at least a week during the time period. They worked together on any type of crises that came up, and it was just, it was really great to see. And everyone did a wonderful job, and I just want to thank them all. I also want to thank staff in the community regarding this ice storm that we just had. That was a very, very challenging week, I think, for everybody. And particularly want to thank Public Works and the Police Department for all of their hard work. They were out there literally risking life and limit times, and they did a phenomenal job on keeping our streets clean and as well as they could in an almost impossible situation. And I also want to thank staff for everything else that was going on during that time period. And some of you may be aware, but we did open up an emergency shelter at Jim Riggs on Wednesday, and we had it potentially opened on Thursday as well. We didn't actually have as much community need, but that's something that we're looking into in the future on seeing if there's additional ways to provide transportation and communication with anybody who may be in need as well. And it was really, really amazing to see staff jump in and, you know, like Director Larson immediately was like, I'll stay at night, I can handle the night shift. And Adam was pretty much taking care of all sorts of things, and all of our staff kind of jumped in immediately. And I also want to thank Mayor Coleman for helping us get volunteers and food and everything. And we were able to get a shelter up and ready to go in under six hours and completely operational and fully staffed, and that was pretty exciting. Also want to thank Lynn County Emergency Management because they assisted in this. They were also the ones who called to this. And now as we're moving forward, they're working on getting us additional supplies so that when we have additional emergencies, we can do even a better job at having emergency shelters. So just want to thank everybody for that, as well as, of course, the Fire District, the Tree Services, and Pacific Power, who were out there doing incredible things. And a lot of community members, I don't know how many people were stepping up, feeding pizza at FAC and other things. So just want to say thank you to everybody. So a couple little quick things. One of the things that was on our consent agenda is that was our contract with CSC to go ahead and start getting some of the emergency housing funding. So that came from our emergency order that is coming from the governor's office. Right now it's about $450,000. There's some additional funding that may be earmarked for us as well. So we are working on putting out an RFP right now and getting some bids. And so we'll be coming back to you with all of that once it's a little bit better shaped up. If any of you want to talk to me about any of our ideas, we're happy to do that. What we're focusing on right now is family housing, but then also potentially providing some small transitional pods at FAC as well. So we're excited about that. That does have to be managed. We are going to be looking for a partner, a nonprofit partner, possibly FAC or another one, Crossroads or some of the other ones that are out there to manage that for us, and that's part of what this funding will cover as well. So finally, we have started working on budgets, which, you know, for some of us, it's our favorite time of year. For others, not so much. But one of the things that we are going to be trying to schedule sometime in February, so watch for invites, are our first goal setting meeting. Yay. So I want to ask each counselor to bring your top five priority projects that you would like to see done over the next year. We're not going to be able to do 35, but we can pick out of all of those, then as councilors, you can decide on your priorities and pick the five or six that we want to focus the budget on and that staff could really, really work on over the next year. So we'll be scheduling that. Let me know if you have any questions. And I'm excited because goal setting starts shaping our budget, and that shapes what staff is going to be doing for the next little while. So we'll also be giving you an update on where we are at with the previous goals. So, and then that's it for me. So again, thank you, and it's really nice to be back, by the way.
Yeah. Welcome back, Kelsey. Thank you for that update. And councilors, five project goals that you're interested in. Start thinking of those now. Mayor's report. I just also want to say, I think Sweet Home shines in storms. Neighbors helping neighbors all over the place. I heard of one person that just called a department here and said, I need to be helping somebody. And they had just gotten a call that somebody needed help, and this department couldn't help them. And thus, neighbor went over and helped the person. But just to know that neighbors are helping each other out. I know it was dicey situation. I appreciate Pacific Power and all the work that they've done, but I know the Fire Department was still running, or Fire District, excuse me, was still running all kinds of calls. They had a lot of calls that weekend, and they just kept it up. I know PD had a lot going on, and so did Public Works, so I just thank you guys all. But I know that neighbors were also helping each other out, so I just, I appreciate seeing that. I don't have anything else this evening to report on. So moving on to the next item, Department Director Reports. There are a few reports in our packets. Does anybody have any questions or comments for directors? If nobody else does, I have a question for the Library Director. How did the movies go this last month?
They've been going very well. We've had oddly seven people, at least at every event, completely different people. But Polar Express, we had about 30 people, which is a lot for our little teen room, but they've been going very well. This Thursday, we have our first after-hours teen movie. We're watching Five Nights at Freddy's, which I know is super popular. I've never seen it, but the teens will be watching that. And then tomorrow, we have another one as well. Can't remember which movie it is, but it'll be popular, I'm sure.
Cool. I had another couple of questions regarding those director reports. There is on the list that we're going to get a design, a park design for City Hall. Is there a time frame for when that's going to get completed?
We're at the initial, we have a design that was done by a now departed retired employee, and we have a current employee that is working on some potential modifications and as well as some renderings of what that might look like from the ground. So we don't have a timeline for that. It's kind of, he puts time in it as he's able to during the course of his regular duties, but we are hoping to have that design probably in the next, hopefully in the next month.
Cool. Great. Thank you. And then I heard there, I read someplace that there was an RFP for Quarry Park. Is there a deadline on that RFP?
So that's not quite out yet. Blair and I are still working on that. And actually, what we're going to do is a request for interest. We want to get some design ideas on possible things that can happen in that. One of the things that we're looking at is seeing if there's some interest in putting in a resort that would then have some profit that would come back to the rest of the park and some of the other parks. So it'd still be for public use. It just would be a place that people could also stay. And that, but we also want to still look at ball fields and some other things as well.
Okay.
But it's something we are talking about a great deal, and it's very much in the works, so you should see it soon.
Thank you. Any other questions from Department Directors?
I would like to give a verbal report since I slacked off and didn't get mine in with the group. But we've been extremely busy. I first want to give thanks to Dominic, the team. Like everyone else, we couldn't get out, and with ice, we even had one of our own trucks slide off the road and was on the side of the road up in the canyon, up by the 10th Avenue water reservoirs. And it stayed there for about four days until we could get it back out ourselves. So we feel everybody else's pain. We did get sanding done for a couple, couple days, but once that got really slick, it was really unsafe for anybody to go out. And we just kind of monitored at that point. We had about approximately 18 to 20 trees that were down in our right of ways that were in wires. We had to coordinate with PAC Power and their contractor rights. And once they can kill the power and get the line out there, and then we can kind of go in and do the cleanup. We had a lot of other branches for calls along right of ways, and I think that was probably where other people kind of stepped in, but we did what we could. Staff worked hard Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday and into Wednesday as things started thawing out. So I just want to give kudos to the team, and they all stayed busy, and so I'm thankful for that. I want to talk a little bit about the water treatment plan and the Green Peter drawdown, the turbidities. They're down to 15 into use. They went up a little bit with the storm, but they came back down. One of the things that we ran into, which you know, we don't have a generator, but we had intermittent power during the storm, and which that made it difficult for us to make water. But staff came in, got the plant up running, then it would get shut down, they'd have to reset it. But they continued to make water even through a little bit of extra hours. Right now, our reservoirs are normal levels, and so I just want to make sure that we thank our people that came into the plan and worked on that. Everything worked out, and we did get low levels, but we didn't get to dangerous low levels. One of the projects that we're working, been working on, you've heard for a couple of years, and I'm glad to get it towards its completion, is the Backwash VFD project. The pump came late November, and we, since we had the drawdown, we didn't really step up and want to try to throw another wrench into what we were trying to accomplish. So after that, we had scheduled with Pacific Excavation to come and install that pump. That pump has been installed. This week, they're actually working on the associated piping. Once the piping's done this week, then TAG will come in and do all the programming and integration. And so hopefully in the upcoming weeks, we'll start using that as intended. So that's a big checkbox for us. Also want to talk a little bit about the wastewater treatment plant and the interim improvement project. It is operational. We are actually making our sludge, well, we generated one dumpster. We're probably putting two and a half dumpsters now. We're actually doing less, right? We're putting more of dry cake versus heavy cake. And cake's probably not a good word, but that's kind of what we call it. But the fact is, that could be a savings for us, even though we've had an increase, we're going to be doing less hauling. So I'm glad to see where this is going. We have a meeting tomorrow with engineers and the contractors to just to go over some small punch list items. I don't anticipate that going on too long, but once those are done, we're going to give sign off to that project and be done with it. So I'm looking forward to that. Staff is currently working with the manufacturer of the screw press to dial in our polymers. Polymer is expensive, we don't want to waste it, but we want to make sure that we're getting official settling, and we're working with them to kind of dial that in. Now, the wastewater project itself, we're getting down to the wire. DQ has approved our plan November 22nd, 23, so they like what we have. We're working through the WIFIA application, and we're gathering all docs, reports, engineering, environmental impacts, all those things that are, there's a long checklist of things that they're going to need. Also, financial information. And so we have a meeting again tomorrow to start collecting all that information and start having some action items on that. We're working their final permitting. When I talk about permitting, to actually get a physical approval from NEPA and also our local permitting, our own building and safety, we have to get a building permit through that. And so we're working through those checklists. We got comments back from everybody. We've got comments back from the fire, state fire marshal. And so once we make those updates, those will be brought back in probably a month or so for final approval, to be in a closer state of being ready to put out to bid. We are planning on pushing that release for those bid documents in March. So that's a big step, and I'm glad that everybody's working hard and we're getting to that point. So March, April, I'm hoping to come back and say that we've got all of our permits secure. We've also pushed out for a contractor at that time, once we have it to that point. And we'll start planning, once we get approval from WIFIA, we can start planning on construction date.
That's exciting.
And that's kind of my update for right now. Any questions?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good job. Chief, do you want to share something?
Yeah, I have just a couple of things to update you on. The PD is fully staffed, and I'm thankful for that for the time being. We have our new janitor that we're sharing with the municipal court and the library hired, and so he started a couple of weeks ago, so we are excited about that. Have a couple officers that are waiting to go to the academy, so that's going to be coming up in the next couple of months, as well as dispatchers. Also, I can't remember if I shared this last time or not, but Tyler Robinson is our new SRO. So he is in the schools now and currently working in cooperation with them. So it's pretty, pretty exciting, and he's taking on some of the traffic enforcement duties, so. That's my update.
I've seen him around Long Street there, so it was good.
Yes, yes, yes.
Session, he's doing traffic, so.
Yes, he's out there being, you know, in the public and doing a good job.
That's great. Thank you so much. Any other questions from councilors regarding directors' reports? If not, council business for good of the order.
Oh, I have something. This is to you, Greg. We kind of talked about it earlier, but I have noticed there's a lot of graffiti at the parks, especially where Ashbrook is. I've driven by it several times a day. And is there any way we could get cameras or something up there?
So certainly, but there is no power in the park. We have no lighting, so that sounds like this may be occurring at night. I'm not sure. So it sounds like we had some tagging, a little bit of vandalism. Thank God, most of it was on a porta potty, but there's a couple of posts I heard that got kicked over. But we don't have power there, and so that would have to be something that we would have to consider, maybe putting some lighting or some way of getting power if we were going to decide to put cameras. But again, to put good, high-resolution cameras like we did in Sankey, there's a price tag with that. Maybe there's some things that we can do once until we can find some funding, game cams, those types. But from what I'm hearing as well, it got hit again. And so I heard about it Monday, yesterday. I haven't seen it, but now you have my interest peeked. You know, probably get out there and take a peek at that. Sounds like the porta potty's got the most of it on here, and we can contact our vendor bucks and get that replaced if needed. But I can probably work with our police officers and maybe get a little bit more patrols. Of course, that's hit and miss, right? We already go to Northside and Sankey, and they've been a big partners in that. But we can definitely try to do something to curb that because we don't, we're putting a lot of effort in our parks, and we just don't want people to come in and damage those. We want them to remain in good shape for everybody to use and enjoy, so. And I heard some of the artwork wasn't its best, so we'll try to get that covered up as well, so.
Porta potty was on its side this morning. They were out there trying to deal with that. Wonder if a community watch group or something would help.
I was thinking community watch group in that area might be a good idea. Maybe somebody who lives in that area can organize community watch group.
Not too far away either.
Yeah.
I want to turn that over to Mr. Larson because he has been working on that project that's close to his heart.
My, my understanding is that they are almost completely done. There is one remaining light on Ninth, I believe, where it's a fixture that didn't have the expected arm to attach the new equipment to. It's actually a light that's by our old water treatment plant. So it probably was a city problem initially, but, and now we're paying for it. So that, they had to order some extra parts to be able to convert that one. So that's the last one that we're waiting on.
It's been like it improved it quite a bit.
It certainly has been a change, and people are getting used to it. I think initially, we had some, some concerns that hopefully we've been able to address. But I know in my neighborhood, I get a lot less light from the streetlights shining into my windows, which I really like.
I think it's really helped, and the lights stay on all the time instead of having to turn off when they get hot. So I've really appreciated the extra lighting, so.
The, with the LED lights, my understanding is that there is, there is, when they do fail, the, there is a potential for them to go purple or go bluish because of the, because to get white light from an LED, you have to have a combination of three colors. And so depending on which of those colors fail, you end up with a kind of an odd color. But fortunately, these are, with these all being brand new, they all appear to be working great. I haven't seen any that are oddly colored. And the good thing is, is that if they do fail, then we just call it. And the good thing is, is that if they do fail, then we just call up Positive Power and they get to change it.
It's wonderful.
I would, I'd like to know what it would cost just to put some of those lights in there. And I asked what it was called there. I think we, I don't know if we could put that out of the, the ARC's funds. If it's going to be a ridiculous amount of money or something, maybe that'd be a different story, but I, I think we should get them in there since we can, whatever, whatever that takes.
Well, I, I think it would start with a conversation with PAC Power first to understand the cost. But PAC Power would have to provide some sort of a meter there and some sort of infrastructure off the street to the park. And then from the park, it would be similar to what we did in Sankey is that we would have a panel put in from our own electrical contractor that, that works with us. And once they put that, we could put conduct conduit in to maybe a place or two. And then maybe that helps with covering the front of that park and, and seeing people that go into it. And maybe that's where we keep, obviously the porta potties right there and a lot of the posts that are getting kicked. Of course, there is playground equipment and other things further back in the park, but maybe it's something that we can piecemeal. But I think we can definitely look at what those costs are, some electrical costs for a panel and then some piping and things like that. So I don't think, I think looking at FAC when we did that, it was a good chunk of change. I want to say about $40,000 off the top of my head. If that's about right, I'm trying to get.
It sounds about right. Our, our lights that we put into Sankey were not cheap. They're, they are, they can be, and you can go less expensive than, than that with, by choosing, you know, not decorative structures. But even if you go bare bones with something that's going to last a while, it, it can be up there in price. The good thing is, is that once you get those lights in, it gives you something to attach cameras to and the power is in that same spot. It, it provides some flexibility, but it is an initial large investment.
Yeah, and I think just thinking that there was also a longer distance to run that power and also a transformer needed to be put in the ground because of future work with the RV dump station. You know, maybe this is just a panel and a service, which it wouldn't be as costly, but we'll, we'll look into those and see if we can round some numbers up for you.
Well, I think history would tell you that if you just continue to let things go bad, it's going to be worse and worse and worse. It won't get better. And so my last thing is, I, I, I was employed when we had these winter things and it's not fun. 24 hours a day is not fun. And if you, if you get an opportunity to see Travis from PPNL, I, I'd recommend you say, thanks for what you did and you guys too. We don't ever have a problem mostly with you guys, except a couple of, and you know, Dominic and those guys. But they do good work and, and they, they deserve it when they, when they get a, a good deal. So.
Personally give PAC Power and Travis some kudos here because we were hearing in the, in that area that it was going to be at least two days to get power on. And we contacted him because it was affected our water treatment plant and they put it at the top of their list. And I believe they had it on by that afternoon, even though it kind of went in and out a couple of times. But within a less than 24 hours, we were able to get back to the plant and start making water, even though we had three days of storage. So they understood that was critical. So I would give him a little bit of kudos for that.
Yeah, those tree guys were, there was a bunch of those people here too. I don't remember their name on their win.
Right.
Rights. And there was a lot of them there too. So.
They worked hard.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Refresh my memory, we had talked about generators before, but we have wastewater and treatment water and we have a city hall and public works. How close are we to being able to do something with generators?
So we need funding. Public Works has a generator. We don't have a generator here. I know there's some work with the Jim Riggs Center that the county is willing to step up with some funding. I have it on my to-do list for this year to try to find some FEMA money. And I think that's a good place for us to start. We obviously have the generator. We have a high up plan with some costs for both of those. And so we kind of have an idea of what we want to do. So I'm the barrier right now. I'm the one that's blocking that, but I, I have it on my list to get it going. And we would love nothing more than to get that, that water treatment plant on its own power.
Yeah, if I can add one more piece to that, and Greg is not the barrier on that, the fact is that it's close to a million dollars for us to get that set up. And so that's just a lot of money, but that is one of our, going to be one of our congressional spending requests. We've talked to Congresswoman DeRimer's office about that. So we're trying multiple avenues. As Greg mentioned FEMA, to try to get those generators hooked up. And as Greg mentioned also, and this is something that I'll be bringing back, we are working with Lynn County on getting a generator that would probably be on a truck that could hook up to Jim Riggs, that could also hook up to other city facilities as needed. So if Jim Riggs had power and City Hall did not, we could bring it over here. So that is very much in the works. And hopefully we can bring that back to you with a report on where that's going in the next month. The current goal is to try to have all of that set up before the summer so that when we have any type, type of power outages or hopefully not. But if there's any fires or anything along those lines, we could, we'll already be prepared.
Thank you. Seems like that's a constant dance and down the road, we're going to hit a wall. So kind of worried about it.
Any other comments from councilors? Okay, so we'll adjourn this meeting at 7:26.